Yeah.
Do you want to bring yours in here?
Yeah.
Oh, Council. Uh, I think I do present this, but. I mean, I'm gonna stay. Um, well, we can receive our audit. Um, it has been completed. We did not receive any findings, but they're great. And the audit was done according to government auditing standards. So if you find hit at the thirty thousand foot level, so if you go to page eleven of your audit, the statement of net position. Remember, we have two funds of our primary government. We have our governmental and then business type activities. The governmental is our general fund and internal service fund. The business type activities are all our enterprise funds. And the difference between the two is business types can make a profit or the general fund or limited based on state statute of how much we can have in fund bonds. So at the end of June thirtieth, twenty twenty two, our total assets in the governmental funds were eleven million, eight hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred eighty six dollars. Our total liabilities were four hundred sixty five thousand, twenty two. Deferred inflows, those are for pensions, is nine hundred and two thousand. Um, net pension that is restricted, which includes capital assets, um, impact fees, classy roads, proper project, transportation tax is ten million, seven hundred forty thousand, seven hundred forty two dollars. Our business type, uh, total assets were five million, one hundred eight thousand, four hundred ninety seven dollars. Um, total liabilities were one hundred nine thousand, six hundred sixty nine. Deferred inflows for pensions was forty thousand, eight twenty nine. Under net position, capital assets and restricted was ending fund balance, total net position of four million, nine hundred sixty eight thousand, three hundred and sixty six. Um, I want to highlight that in the general fund, our fund balance increased by one point two million. Um, that includes restricted funds, so it would impact these in classy roads. Um, so our full unrestricted fund balance increased by one point one million. Want you to keep in mind that the portion of the cell of the public works building is in that one point one million. Um, we did not have to, uh, we maintained within our budget because we reopened our budget. Um, and reallocated the cares money. So we did not go over on any of our projects or in our funds. So, um, the auditors looked over our budgetary compliance, fund balance, justice court, restricted active progress that's happened, current golf fees, tax levy, revenue, Utah retirement, public treasury, bond, and our thing will be. The only thing they found was in the justice court, we didn't have a separation of duties, but we have taken care of that this fiscal year. Um, do you have any questions?
Actually, yes, one, um, we usually say that if you said there wasn't reward any findings, they'll actually have some suggestions or things that we need to be attentive to. Was there anything like that in this?
Um, the only one they highlighted was we went over our fund balance by the thirty five percent. So we have three hundred and thirty seven thousand that we do need to spend. But with the market adjustment, we're going to use those funds. So it already been accounted for and then for justice or justice court. Probably who's not using them, so I think great. I'm very took care of that because it's been eight months ago.
Thank you, Jessica. That was fun. We appreciate your help you and Jill working so hard on that to get this report in. I have never seen discussion possible action of the grant of extension for the conditional zoning of the Ben Mullen's development. Anyway, thank you, Mayor and Council. So it was brought, this was brought to the attention of the city by the developer's attorney that, um, our conditional zoning that we adopted in June of twenty twenty one, that the development agreement to change the zoning of Ben Mullen, of course, from open space and agricultural zone to the mixed use large project Ben Mullen zone. Uh, there is a reverse and automatically included in that ordinance. There is also included in our code. Uh, the municipal code eleven dot zero six dot zero eight zero, um, subsection three says the city may examine the reasons for the delay and the progress of the developers to that point and may either extend the timeframe or initiate the steps to for the reversion. So I've outlined, uh, in the staff report, the progress of the developers to date. I think you're all very aware of the progress that the developers have made. And the analysis that was done of both the phase that they submitted so far to the city is consistent with the plan maps and the master development that they have proposed that are included in ordinance type fifteen. They have since acquired the easements that are needed for the storm water improvements with the adjoining property owners. They've also applied for the scheme of stream alteration permit required for Millennium Park. And there were a couple of items outstanding on the engineer memo for the final approval for phase two A. And the preliminary approval for phase two D. So the reasons for the delay of their project are outlined in number four of the staff memo. They did make application and I stand corrected, their application was actually submitted to UDOT in May of twenty twenty two. And they, I'm not writing for two access points and right away work for their project. Uh, over the course of the months following, the city staff as well as the developers met with UDOT. They were asked to conduct, conduct additional studies of the intersection at the proposed fifteen fifty street light that is included in our two thousand and six corridor agreement, which they did conduct. And additionally, they constructed a signal engineering for the new proposed location further north at approximately nineteen hundred North Highway eighty nine. So in early December, city staff initiated a conversation with the other cities that are on the corridor agreement. Uh, that's probably New North, Hagen and Far West. We met together several times and collected a comprehensive map of future connections that we anticipate or signals that we would be requesting for UDOT. The developer received feedback from UDOT that an amendment or an update to that corridor agreement would be required before they could receive final approval of their permit, their access permit. So I'm happy to record that last Wednesday on February ninth, the city staff along with all the other cities uh, included on the corridor agreement, met with UDOT and received permission to relocate the light from fifteen fifty North Highway eighty nine to the proposed location nineteen hundred North Highway eighty nine. And that permit has been issued to the developer for those access points. So they are able to move forward and staff is recommending authorizing an extension up for thirty six months to give them time to work through the upgrade process before the recording is required of the subdivision. If you have questions, we're happy as staff to address them or the developers here as well.
With the, uh, acquiring of the Coon's property, will there be any entrances exits on the east end of two thousand north?
So yes, the.
On the east end?
Yes, phase two D includes an access point on the that would be the East Burn Hills access point from the project. And then there is a second access to two thousand north on the east side of the existing townhomes. So there are two accesses on to two thousand north.
There's two on two thousand?
So the first one is on the very east side of the existing townhomes. And the other one would be, uh, approximately.
Is it where the Coon's property was?
Uh, it's a little, yeah, a little west or, yes, I guess where their agricultural land was, yes.
Okay, I just got a question. When you look at the staff report of number two, um, that bold print down at the bottom, the sentence that goes above it, I'm just confused on that. Cause it's one past eighteen months.
Yes.
So I'm wondering what's, so what is the sentence above it when we're going by any event that any development fails?
So included in the ordinance is the language that in the events that it does not conform to the plan maps or the master development plan.
Okay.
Or if the plat is not recorded.
Right, so it's got to be either or.
The, and the plans do conform, but the plat has not been recorded.
Okay, that was my question. I just wondered where we were with that. Okay. Thank you.
So then also on the light moving to nineteen hundred, we're basically putting a light on two thousand and now everybody will be able to go right or left?
So there is not a proposed light on two thousand. There is only a light at nineteen hundred. That is the one for the, the Ben Mullen project.
Okay, is that not too close?
That's right, just right in the corner. Yeah, that's right off two thousand.
That would like. Close, close to the entrance to the golf course itself.
It's more accurately, this is approximate, it's more accurately probably seventeen to eighteen hundred cause it's right where the parking lot is existing.
Perfect.
So that's an appropriate situation.
Yeah, when you said nineteen hundred, I was thinking.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, okay, we're good.
You have a question or is that?
That was my question.
Yeah, good.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just had a question. Why thirty six months? Why not less time? Why not more time?
So because of the large project, the proposed, um, access that they are going to have to work through to give the, the first phase includes construction of the entire road that goes from Highway eighty nine up to two thousand north. All of that is included in phase one. Uh, we anticipate it being, it's up to thirty six months. You can shorten that timeline obviously, but that's what we're anticipating will take place before they'll be ready to record. Uh, keep in mind, before they're able to record their plaques, they have to put in the improvements or set up escrow for the remaining improvements. So this allows them a timeline to work through to get the improvements installed rather than come up with the money to put in escrow.
Thank you. Uh huh, yeah.
Thank you. Any further question? If not, may I have a motion?
I'm making a motion that we grant an extension uh, for conditional zoning of the Ben Mullen used development for the time period of, uh, thirty six months. I have a second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Oh, thank you, there's. Thank you.
I got sound, so I can hear. Now I lost it.
I think we're good. All right, motion passed. Thank you. Just caught me a little bit off guard there. All right, item D, discussion possible actions again, grant final acceptance of subdivision, check for chisel.
Um, a few months back, if you guys were twelve, came in and asked for some special funding to fix all the streetlights at Plush Nest. Um, with doing so, started a conversation with the developer of that development, um, gentleman Cornech. Um, there was actually two outstanding bills, the twenty thousand dollars for the street light repair and a sixteen thousand dollar crack still through the entirety of the roadway. We've been able to actually do a complete walk through. And we received last Thursday that check for those two unpaid balances from that developer. And so we are ready to put this plush nest development into full city uh, maintenance and, and take it over. Kind of been a long one in the waiting, but we finally got it.
So, so the streetlights are all working now?
All the streetlights working, all the sidewalks good. Like I said, we, we received some back fees that I was hoping we could get, but was not not thousand percent sure we would get, didn't get those, but we did. So, yeah, we, we were ready to say, let's go to final acceptance and, and move forward with, with that. I mean, hopefully from here on out, these subdivisions are probably different and lots of it.
Thank you for pursuing that.
We're welcome.
He and Stan, they all came together. Any further questions for Justin? Thank you, Justin. Uh, motion please.
I motion to be grant final acceptance of the bush nest subdivision.
I have motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item E, this is discussion possible action.
All right, back to justice court. So, uh, we've had this conversation a couple of times before about tailors. Um, we've gone back to incision before and we still do not have any bailiffs. So myself and assistant chief more than covering for um, what we're going through right now, next year's budget, I have budgeted, um, ten thousand dollars to hire a, a court company to come in and just do court. And I guess what I'm asking tonight is if you're willing to sign the contract now and use them for the rest of this year. Right now, we have approximately about thirteen hundred dollars in court security funds now. It would be a probably an additional two thousand approximately, um, if we, if we brought them on this year to take care of it through, through July or through July.
The, the same outfit that, uh, provides for August cities courts?
Yes.
There's a constable's office basically.
Yeah, global constable. If you look in the, um, in the proposal I sent out, it lists all the cities that, that they contract with.
How many will they have?
Two. Um, this contract has, um, two, two officers for five hour shifts twice a month.
Do we pay them a minimum?
It's a minimum of four hours. And the way our contract sits, um, where we only have it twice a month, we won't run into an overtime situation. So if we have a small court or something that comes up for trial, it'll last longer. We won't get into an overtime situation because they won't be a forty hour employee here.
Will they do transports?
They will, but that's an extra cost.
Comes down to.
Yeah. So a transport from the jail to here for a round trip is twenty five fifty per prison.
So the judge remands someone into custody, we'll get one of our patrol to take him there?
Yeah, yeah. That seems the best option. The 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 two thousand dollars extra adds a little bit extra value to it in case we do go over.
So it's the two thousand plus the, what'd you say, thirteen hundred?
Yeah. Already in there. That also covers um officer Hill when he comes and sits for counseling and stuff to go. But there's approximately thirteen hundred in there right now.
That would take care of for the rest of this year for the payless.
Plus, plus.
This fiscal year?
Yes.
Yeah.
But it's not working come July or this.
Yeah, and why why we do this contract, I I also would like permission to be able to terminate that if something. It is not fitting our needs instead of having to come back to counsel.
Is that written in that? I don't know. I saw that in the contract. Is that written in there that we have an option to counsel it?
There are a few changes that need to happen in this. I'll have to send that out. But I would like that to part that. I'm trying to get it going in March. We have one more court date on the twenty second this month, so.
Then did I read in there? Make sure I got the numbers right. Didn't you say ten thousand dollars a year?
There's a little extra in there for for overages, but okay. But that's what the full year would be. If you go right down to the, I I believe it's twenty eight hundred dollars is what. The rest of this year will cost unless things go over or there's a transfer or something else, so. The two thousand dollars that I'm I'm requesting is is has to make to put in the NAP. Not necessarily with all that money spent.
Against any harm we try.
They say they do a lot of other courts and. It just it makes sense. I mean, with even if we pulled in our guys to come in, you're paying them a overtime rate, which is far more than. Than what we're paying them, plus they're carrying their own liability insurance.
Any more questions? Alright, no more questions. Make a motion please.
To make a motion that we adopt the change to the court security system. Right, we have to put the cost in or we're alright?
Do you have a problem with that?
I already just rest this year with the extra two thousand dollars.
If if we add two thousand to the budget, we should pay. If if that should have extra that at the end of the year, two thousand dollars over to three thousand dollars.
Alright, second.
Okay, that makes.
Yeah, you're okay. Okay. This is a roll call vote. I counsel number eleven.
Yes.
Counselor Jackson.
Yes.
Counselor Chris Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Weiss.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Hey, item F, discussion possible action to approve the stormwater improvements in Harrisville, me.
And certainly January, we ran across the uh flood that we were not expecting. Um with all this snowfall were involved one day. Um in finding that out. Trying to exercise or work the headgate at this main city park. Um. It was inoperable. Due to some. The rebuild up and some just long, it's it's just been in for quite a long time and not been maintained. Up to the standard that it should have. Um so we already started this project um. Due to the procurement policy we passed because it's a project that falls into the twenty to twenty five thousand dollar range. Um I did get three bids. Uh those tell me you're in your mammals. We are had twenty able to cut out and clean up that box. Um we're looking at getting some extensions and. And a new headgate on that box so that now we can move forward and maintain it. From here on out, a lot better, more efficient and not have these issues. And be able to hold the water back in the park that needs to be held back and help with flooding downstream. Um so due to the procurement policy, um I have it in my budget. I just did not have it as noted as such. Um so I have the money. It's set aside for these types of projects. But now we can do the specific project and use those budgetary funds that we have.
So if this is how you started, what's the anticipated completion date?
I would say no later than March. Six.
Okay, not too long.
There might be a little bit of. Weight on some song. Um just around the box, just because we don't wanna play a song till.
Yeah.
But the trap and everything should should be open by the first of March. So we'll be ready for spring. Yes.
Any anticipated runoff will be prepared for this week?
Yes.
Any questions for Justin? Okay, thank you, Jessica. Um I need a motion, please.
I make a motion that we adopt um improve the stormwater improvements. Um and the Harrisville. Up second.
Two seconds. Okay, I have a motion in a second. This is also a roll call. Health number eleven.
Yes.
Counselor Jackson.
Yeah.
Counselor Chris Johnson.
Yeah.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hey, item G, discuss discussion possible action for the parable ordinance five thirty nine, which is the general plan amendment. Amending the moderate income housing elements of the general plan and including the twenty twenty two moderate income housing report. Jenny, no.
Thank you, Mary. Uh as all of you are aware, on it back in November, we received a notice of noncompliance for the twenty twenty two. Modern income housing report, which outlined the deficiencies in our reported issue the ninety day grace period for compliance. The majority of cities required a cloud of report were actually issued notices of noncompliance. Uh due to the new legislative that was passed in last legislative session uh in twenty twenty two and increased the revenues. From um the city. So the background there is in twenty nineteen um SB thirty four was passed where. Cities with population greater than five thousand are required to implement a moderate income housing report. Reporting back to the Department of Workforce Services, which we did with the first compliance in twenty twenty. Additional requirements were added in the twenty twenty two legislative session, which required cities to come adopt strategies for implementation that included. Time lines, which is where our report was deficient and also very specifically which in our general plan. For the new strategies that they modified. Um during the process, we identified what our moderate income housing um. Looks like in Harrisville. It's changed drastically since our twenty eighteen report. And because of the inflated cost to homes now, we don't have very many homes that qualify for. As moderate income housing. And to. Meet the state's requirements, we must adopt at least three strategies. Staff is proposing six strategies in the. Proposed ordinance and we can share those strategies here. We have identified and pulled up that were included in your packet. And we held the required public hearing. In planning during planning commission. That was one of the issues that were brought up by many cities that were noncompliant was. The state code requires public hearings and. Planning Commission recommendation for general plan amendments. So the type, the ninety day time period, we pushed very close. This report is due this Thursday. Is our name ninety day mark. So um following adoption of the ordinance, I'll be uploading that tonight this evening to the state to make sure of cities. Compliance. And there were two comments received or two. Other comments received during the public hearing at the January eleventh. Planning Commission meeting. And this ordinance does come with a positive recommendation from planning commission from that meeting. What staff did incorporate in for this is we identified. What we feel like our existing plans or implementation options that we have in our current. Code or minor modifications to our code. These strategies that are outlined here are in line with the reference. So this is the state code that we've identified. This is the strategy objective. This is the implementation plan. And this is the timeline for compliance that we anticipate. So you are free to make your own recommendations or modifications. To this plan. If you find there's something that we could do a little better on the city staff, but we felt like aligning. The strategies with. Proposed ordinances or overlay maps or strategies that they've already implemented would be beneficial for our compliance. That we don't add and tax our current staff with additional. Compliance issues in the future. So I'm happy to go over them one by one or take comments or whatever you, whatever you'd like to do. You can reduce it. They write three is mandatory, five is recommended for special funding options. I've included six just for good measure.
I only have a question on strategy number three. And it says create or allow for and reduce regulations related to internal or detached accessory dwelling units in residential zones. I get just a little bit worried about that reduced regulations part. I don't want the town, I don't want our city to turn into. A whole bunch of little accessory dwellings in everybody's backyard or side yard. That bothers me with that wording. That's the only thing I had any problems with.
So we can, we can eliminate that. We can eliminate that word, that wording, that section. Uh we. Believe it was in twenty twenty one that they adopted the internal dwelling unit. Regulations that were mandated. Um we anticipate being accessory dwelling units. We, it's. Floating around in the legislative session, but it's, there's not a bill proposed as of uh yet. Well, some of the things. Just because we've identified a strategy doesn't mean we have to adopt it. One of the things we do have to do is show the big figures. Or the issues that we face by trying to adopt it. So. Even though it's included in our strategy, doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna happen within the city.
Okay.
Maybe it's something we just look at and go, okay, we don't. So we are, you are free to change that, remove that, eliminate that entire strategy because we do have an extra strategy.
Where you're concerned about like flag glass?
Not flag glass, because we don't, we can't have those anyway, right? No, I'm considered worried about, okay, I've got room behind my house. Do I just throw up a couple little apartments back there? You know, then my neighbors are all ticked off of me and I don't wanna see that. I don't want my neighbors. Put little units out behind their house around there too. So I, that's my concern as a homeowner in Harrisville.
Again, the counter has to come for us. I think we have it there. We're making the.
So we could turn it down.
I think what this means is that we're identifying a strategy that could work.
Good, right?
But maybe. This is not adopting an ordinance that lasts it.
Okay.
This is saying that we're identifying that we could evaluate our city, look at areas within our city where it might. Work. And we take data, we take data, for example, one of our other. Strategies is to consider other zoning overlays. For example, a senior area. That are becoming more and more of a higher demand for cities um that bring reduced police calls. They don't necessarily increase traffic any more than a single family home because typically you only have one person or two people. There are also our communities. I don't recommend that in our community because of the weather, but. There, thi- this is identifying areas within the city that we recognize. This may be a good place to put a senior city. Or give me a senior. And and having an overlay map. Similar to our mixed youth map that would say this would be an allowed use in this area. Means that an applicant could apply for that, but it's still a legislative decision on whether that happens. It doesn't take the authority away from the legislative body to make the final decision as. As far as the zoning change goes.
We will look at it as an option.
We'll look at it.
Yeah.
Okay, as long as it's not like written in stone.
This is.
That's what worries me. I don't wanna have to go back and try and fix a mistake we make now. So for, that's how it is in the bank.
Everyone else agree with that? Any more questions for Jenny? Any more discussion? This is a big deal. It's, it's taken a lot of staff to get these strategies taken care of and to bring this into compliance. Ninety days of leave of work. We appreciate all the staff.
Yeah, everything that's, that's a lot.
To read that, I go, I would never, in a million years, I'd never write that. Any more discussion? You wanna leave them all in? Any more? If no more discussion, can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve ordinance five thirty nine, general plan amendment, amending the moderate income housing elements. Of the general plan, including the twenty twenty two moderate income housing report.
I'll say it.
Okay, now a motion in a second. This is also a roll call. Counselor number eleven.
Yes.
Counselor for Jackson.
Yes.
Counselor Christianson.
Yes.
Counselor Weiss.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Item H. This is discussion possible actions without the twenty twenty three goals. And when we had our retreat academy, we were going to go over some goals and we just got too late in the night. We had so much to talk about, so. I'm actually gonna turn this over to Jenny and see if she's got some review from last year and go ahead.
Sure. So we kind of touched over the goals that we set for twenty twenty two and I do have that available. Um screenshot for those online. I do have that available to quickly. Review. They do it really quick. Uh identifying the. The goals and the benchmarks that we've met so far with those goals. So our first goal for twenty twenty two was economic development. Our second was the new municipal complex. The third was Ben London ground. The fourth was the department and staff development. Fifth was the city flag. Sixth was increase in community activities. Then was the cemetery plan and H was utility rate analysis. Um. I've updated this in my last eight days because I removed all the dates when I copy and pasted it. So you can identify the goals for twenty twenty three. If you want to recapture some that we've been complete in twenty twenty two and staff already, but also have some adjusted. Goals that we set for twenty twenty three, one of them being the moderate income housing that we just adopted. And also, we need to reevaluate and um identify and update our franchise agreement. We'd like to conduct a business study in our city and complete our impact. The facilities plans that we have, uh transportation one that we're sending out in RFP on. And also, we are applying for the healthy Utah community designation. And as part of that application to have the state recognition for a healthy community, we need to identify a goal. There are four that came out of committee meeting in January. There are four that came out of committee meeting in January. One is to hold a farmer's market. And so much of what we've done in the past. The second is to run an information campaign on the state's revenue portal. Website to promote active living mental health and healthy eating with links that people can utilize. To conduct a walkability audit, which we actually have a survey included in the newsletter with a link. For that and create a healthy eating policy that one of those goals identified would help us meet our standard. For that application for the healthy Utah recognition or designation, excuse me. So if there's. Other goals you want to add, goals that you want to continue from last year. Let staff know what your focus will be. Like to identify capital improvement projects that we know are upcoming as well. Like the West Parisville Road widening project in twenty twenty four. The continued. If you identify that you wanted to take the next step in that municipal complex by acquiring the property highway nine, anything like that.
What are the franchise agreements? I don't know what those are.
So franchise agreements are agreements that we have with typically utility companies like. Uh, Dominion Energy or Rock Mountain Power and we get a percentage of the tax that are collected.
Good, thank you.
I think we'll review those in the pages. So yeah, there's some that go back and those utility companies don't exist anymore, so.
Are we still interested in the city flag? I know that was something the U City Council wanted to do last year, but I don't know if it's. Is that something you still wanna do?
I think it would be something that we can turn over to them, open it up to the city. Residents, bring in the ideas, the drawings. And then take it from there, but let them take the lead.
Okay. So like that is a goal.
Or ask them to do that at one point.
Good. We have.
All right, we go after it right now. Yeah.
Could you scroll up a little bit on those? So you, do you want to add the franchise agreements under that?
Yeah, yeah.
Update those. I think we need to conduct our business license study.
Yeah, how long has it been since that?
Twenty sixteen.
Oh, yeah.
All of those, those four suggestions were together. So for clarification, are we replacing any or are we adding? Well, we're almost close to some of those.
So we, we paused the cemetery plan because it required a complete assessment of our boundaries. Through Johnson Associates and we had other higher priority projects. So as soon as you want us to. Yeah, we still have some higher priority. Do you want to, okay. Okay, everybody.
I have another suggestion, possibly. That would be, what about our fall festival? Since we're gonna make this a big thing, is that something you wanna get the, uh. City involved in with some type of a logo or something every year? You know, it's parallels what they do with Weber County Fairgrounds. But it becomes a logo for our festival. I don't know if we wanna go to that detail, but it's my thought.
All right.
And I don't even know if you heard me.
We did. Thank you, Rover. I think it's a good suggestion.
I, that's something else I think you could return. Let's let, let's let them come up with some ideas and hope they.
Okay. Good suggestion. I will put that down. So should we leave that as the increase in community activities that are focused with the fall festival?
Yeah, I think the farmer's market, I think that's something else that could.
The farmer's market? Is that the strategy you wanna have, uh? For the application of helping Utah communities is a farmer's market? It's been attempted before. It does a lot of work. I mean, we're not afraid of work, right? But it is a lot of that, so it might be something that we would be asking for some help with.
And then I think there's plenty. I know that if we put it out to the citizens, that there are probably enough of them that would want to. Help in that situation and.
Okay. So you want that to be the, that consensus?
I kinda like to conduct a walkability audit too for our town.
And I don't know how that works too. The included in the newsletter was a survey link. And click on the link, it asks questions about your community. So it identify, you're identifying whether you can walk in your community, for example. Where I live currently, there's no skirt or sidewalk. So walkability is, um, in the street, right? Or so you're identifying those things that make your community walkable.
I think the conjunction with that are historians like to create not necessarily a historical district, but. A historical area with plaques along mostly west and north Harrisville Road. Where people can come in and read about the history. But it would be in conjunction with a big walk as well.
So we do have a walking tool? Is that what you're referencing?
Right.
Historical walking tool that identifies the star cones and.
They go a little further with, with some plaques and some information, but here isn't. How well we see this at Farmer's Market last time it was held?
It was, I think we did it for three years, I believe. It, it just needed a little bit more of a boost. We had a hard time getting any farmers to bring it. I think people were willing to come and buy something, but it was not having anything available.
It can, cause I have a couple friends who do farmers markets and they're kind of one away from them also. They.
Is that right?
They have other, yeah, they, they do other things.
Okay.
I wonder if you ought to do it in conjunction with something else, you know, like we're doing it with our Halloween thing. Uh, Farmer's Market earlier, but that brings people here. I think that's one of the challenges farmers have. They don't know what to bring. They don't have a place to set up and it may not have to be in the fall, but you know, if we have movie night or something like that, do you wanna do? Uh, do you wanna do farmers, uh, a mini farmer's market then? I don't know. I think you have to get creative with your different planning and combine your events together. Then you get a lot more synergy. A lot more people coming out.
That is September anyway. But with the movies, maybe we can put something together, yeah.
Brian, I already got those movies and the movie dates. Can I call any Brian to?
Yeah, what are the dates? So it's, we've got one June second, July seventh and August fourth. And the idea would be to kind of keep those during the summer months and July, August. But we all do whatever we want. No, but the July and August, you probably people would have stuff ready and those are all Friday nights.
Yeah, they could bring. Did you, I guess, you know, like the Ogden Farmer's Market, there's. Some produce, but it's a lot of other stuff. And I don't know how the one here was. Did it have a lot of other stuff also with it? So it's not just a farmer's market.
Yeah.
I'll go to color. Yeah, yeah. Good, yeah.
Well, I know that there's challenges along with that. Every time we have our activities, there's, you know, parking is always a problem. And now if you're opening it up more than just the food and you're doing trinkets and all kinds of other wares like they do down in Ogden. You gotta have a place for parking or, you know, people won't come. They just, they're not exceptionally excited about parking on the highway at United Walking Over. So I think we have to look at it very balanced to see how fast we want it to roll, what do we wanna do, target with. Uh, teaming up with different things that, you know, bring our Harrisville City residents here, something that they would be interested in. I don't know. That's a lot to ask, but that's just my ideas in general. Another thought that I've had too, if I can move it on, and that's our seniors innocence. We have a large group of senior citizens. They are taking, I have talked about, uh. Re, what, reconstituting or bringing back the senior citizen lunches. And I'm wondering if that ought to be on those increased activities too, community activities. Activities for senior citizens.
So can Steph make a suggestion on that, then maybe from your conversation here? Should we adopt maybe the strategy for the healthy Utah as. The walkability survey so that we can meet that requirement to move forward with our application for that designation. But identify that the farmer's market slash senior community can be part of our increase to our community events goal. In twenty twenty three.
Yeah, I think he did the farmer market. It's true, man. Like the last two movies.
Well, are there limitations of what you can do with the, those, I mean, you have to pay first and.
Well, yeah, so, um, there's different fees associated with the number of people that you plan on attending.
For the movies.
For the movies. So zero to two hundred princesses is four hundred and eighty dollars for the movie rights to do that. Over a thousand would be. Twelve, well, five to five hundred to a thousand, I need this twelve hundred and fifty dollars. So they just increase in increment space right here.
Isn't there something you can't sell?
Food you have it.
Even before or after, I remember we used to have.
There's some advertising issues with, um, that.
So I'm not sure we wanna leak anything about the, the, that if we're, we're unsure.
My idea was link up together, but I think it has to be discussed and looked at. I think Brian, you got a good point. If we start tweaking it, sometimes it costs us more money than not. But I think if we want people to come, anything we can do to combine different activities together, maybe it's not the movie night, but. That was the concept. It was all it was, just a thought.
I think we need to go with the proposition Jenny brought up from staff.
Okay, the walkability and then link the other ones into the community activities. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, so would we be safe to say? We're not necessarily replacing goal number one, the economic development or adding the element of moderate income housing to the economic development goal? Are we safe to say that?
Yeah.
And then. Would you like to leave the new municipal complex on as a goal for?
Yeah.
And. The Ben Lomond Ground may be broken. We have good news this evening that that's likely going to happen in twenty twenty three. Department and staff development, I think we've, we've met that as much as we can at this point. We've restacked all of our departments. Are we okay to remove that one? Or just continue as we're going, but not necessarily set it as a goal? Can you tell me?
I think that's probably what it is. That's, I think we're on track now. We know what we're doing with that.
Uh, the city flag, we'll continue that with the goal with the instruction that the U City Council will kind of hit that up. Increase in our community activities with these new thoughts with farmer's market moving the park. The cemetery plan will pull off for now. Everybody's gonna agree on that. And our utility rate analysis will just monitor. We've made some modifications to that this year. We'll monitor and review anything that we. Find is deficient, but we can pull that off as a goal. And then we'll replace those goals with franchise agreements, updates, business license study. And. Completing our impact, the studies. Oh, and I did have on there beginning to adopt our rules procedure that, that's more of a staff thing to present to you, but yes. Everybody, okay with those goals for tonight, Jane? Okay.
We always have some lucky goals. I like it. All right. Go ahead.
Is there a way you can print the twenty twenty three goals up for us or an email to us or something?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We do need a motion to withdraw this.
I motion, we adopt the goals through twenty twenty three.
All right, now a motion in a second. All in favor? All right, motion carried. Thank you. All right, thank you. That's a long night. We had a, so much on our agenda for a while. Moving on, uh, we're now at the end of our business side and we're moving on to public comments. This is an opportunity for those that are new that are ended for this purpose, could come up to the podium, state your name and tell us your concern in three minutes or less. All right, maybe no one's. I'm gonna close with them. Thank you. Mayor Council follow up, uh, growers, or anything you wanted to add tonight?
No, I'm fine. Literally, I'm fine.
Uh, Steve.
No.
All right, and I'm just gonna say quick thank you again to the staff. Everything that's on this has been a lot of good, so. That's true. Okay, we, I didn't write it down, so when I don't write it down, I forget. We have department heads that have updates. Uh, Justin, do you have anything?
Well. As you, as some of you know, we had a little bit of that take place at the public works facility. So when we were going to, my waste department to better monitor that, looking into a camera system. They're trying to help deter that. Um, what ended up happening is two catalytic converters were cut off of. Two of our snowplow trucks. Ended up being about fourteen thousand dollars in damage for the city to replace and probably about. Three to four months of time about those two trucks. Well, um, just again, thank you guys for allowing us to, to move forward with building this. New facility and having the opportunity to, to help, help our residents out. To turn that. Being able to park vehicles all under fully covered, fully locked. Facilities, just, we can't thank you enough. The, the hard work and I know it wasn't easy and I know there's been some backlash, but thank you guys again. Um, as you can tell. It's been a winter. There's a lot of snow in it. Um, we needed it. We're happy about it, but again. We can try to tell you guys as much as, as citizen and representative of the city that you guys are. Are burning out with shut ones now off your driveway. Our drivers are burning out too. Please, you know, if, if you have neighbors, just ask them to be pulled your way. It's better than a, a one finger way. And, and we just dragged by and, and, but there again, if damage has happened, please let us know. I mean. I. Myself got in a box the other day and luckily they got it on their green doorbell and sent it right over to me and. And we got fixed that next day and it wasn't a big deal, but it's kind of funny to look back on, you know, and, and see and. They actually think on the whole video.
I can't hear anything.
Can you hear now, Rover?
I can hear now. We're good.
We went through and created an asset list of if it's got a serial number or model number, it's never registered and what we've got over there. It's documented. That's. We're going through also, um, some vehicle motor pool stuff and kind of cleaning that up. We're going through also um some vehicle motor pool stuff and kind of cleaning that up a little bit too. Um it's a good month for us to go through our vehicles and, and equipment and stuff, clean those up and we sent them to Justin and he has been serviced and then he gave that to us. Brendan full swing boys basketball games, um everything's going smooth there, nothing to report, so that's a good thing. Um of course budget, um still working on that a little bit, uh we had the budget, you had my uh budget review kind of last month, I think we're going to have another meeting about it in March, but I, with the movie in the parks, um I have to move forward with purchasing that equipment before well, I can't wait too long, so I've kind of navigated my budget a little bit, I can do it, I've got the funds, I just need to redo my budget a little bit, I'll present that to you at a later meeting to show you what I've done with that, but we're going to go forward and purchase that equipment probably this week, probably have that check ready, so. And then just applaud for donations, we're always looking for donations for community events, so if you know anybody who may want to or is able to, connections that way, it's always helpful and appreciated for that work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a couple updates from the numbers from the budget that you presented last time, I just want to make sure everybody's aware that we are asking for a new detective, but I, the numbers for that employee were not included in the numbers that I gave you guys, so just, just something to be aware of, what are the period of those numbers? Um we've also been working with U Canals, if you more have. And it sounds like that we may be able to save ten thousand dollars off of what we approved for the radio purchase already. It looks like it's going to happen, but I don't want to promise anything until we actually do. It, it looks like that's going to be a considerably less than what we had planned on. So. Thank you for everything you guys do.
I just have one quick update, and I think you've heard enough from me tonight, but I did want to report that the planning commission did approve a conditional use permit for the Public Works Building. We asked to get that meeting, so we're moving forward with the development of the site plan. So that's moving on.
Thank you. Uh I don't have anything to follow up on, so we'll move on. Uh we're now going to close the public portion of our, our city council meeting tonight, we're going to follow up with a closed executive session. I need a motion and.
I'll make a motion. Close executive session.
I'll second it.
A motion in a second, I need a roll call for this, Councilmember Lovin?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Yeah.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yeah.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
All right, thank you. So I will give this a brief five minutes in your session and it seems so that people are not invited, they need.
I'm not invited.